Folks, we're going to get started. Please grab your seats. That applies to you media folks in the back. Grab your seats. All right, thank you. Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We are back in session for City Council Ordinance 23-0381, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2024. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joined to my left by Council President Nick Mosby, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District. To my right, Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District, Councilman Tony Glover, 13th District, and Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, Vice Chair of the Committee. Also been joined by Councilman Zeke Cohen, 1st District. To my immediate right is Staff to the Committee Matt Peters. We're also joined by staff from Mayor Brandon Scott and Council President Nick Mosby's offices, respectively. We're back in session for State's Attorney's Office. Before we get started, a couple of quick ground rules. If you have a cellphone, please turn it to silent, vibrate, off, or some other setting that does not make noise. If you are at one of these desks and will be testifying, we have some 21st century technology in council chambers now. You will see two buttons on the bottom. One of those looks like a little Lego character with a Wi-Fi symbol next to their head. Push that button, it'll turn the light red. When you are done speaking, please be sure to turn this off. These mics are very sensitive and will catch whispers, sneezing, breathing, et cetera. Mr. State's Attorney, how many slides do you have in your deck? 10? How much time do you anticipate needing for your intro? Perfect. For anyone on your team that you call up to testify who may not be sitting at one of these seats, you can either sit at one of these desks with a microphone or you can come up to the lectern over here. Mr. State's Attorney, before you begin your presentation, you have the clicker? Perfect. Please introduce the members of your senior team that are here, first and last name, along with position title for the folks sitting up at the council member desks.
First of all, let me say good evening. Thank you very much for having me. Chairman Costello, also want to say good evening, Council President Nick Mosby. I also know that Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton isn't. I didn't see her right now, but I'm sure she's also observing. And also, all the other members of the council. In front of me, I have my Chief Operating Officer Deputy Catherine Flynn. Right next to her is Mr. Tom Donnelly. He's the Head of Violent Crime for our office. We also have Deputy Greg Solomon. She could not be here today. And then we also have my Chief of Staff Angela Galliano to the right of me. We also have, who's also part of the executive team, Mr. James Bentley is the Head of Communications. And I have a number of other members, if they're needed, who are here from the State's Attorney's Office. And just real quickly, without everybody coming to the front, just stand up if you could. This is the leadership within the State's Attorney's Office, numbered Division Chiefs, Deputies, now the individuals. If they're needed, I would definitely ask them to speak. Thank you. Oh, and also Amanda Grantham from our Victim Witness Division. She's here as well, young lady to the right. Good afternoon, Chairman Costello, members of Ways and Means Committee. Good afternoon to all the other distinguished members in the council joining us today. Honorable members of Baltimore City Council, I come before you today as the 26th Baltimore City State's Attorney, humbled and grateful for the opportunity to address this esteemed body for the Fiscal Year 24 Budget Hearing. It's definitely been a lively five months since I first taken office, but we've had some great achievements in our fight to disrupt violent crime along the way, made significant progress on rebuilding the office, and have a much clearer vision of the path forward. I want to take this opportunity to provide the Baltimore City Council with a status update of our priorities, but more importantly, to further convey my vision of how the office of State's Attorneys can bring about a new era of accountability and confidence in our city. First, I want to express my sincere appreciation for the collaboration and support we have received from this council in our ongoing effort to create a fair and just legal system. Together, we have made significant strides in advancing the cause of justice, tackling systemic issues, and rebuilding the trust within our communities. However, we acknowledge that there is still much work to be done. When we arrived in January examining the office of State's Attorney, determined where we could improve operations, enhance support for our staff, and increase the effectiveness of our prosecutors. After I was sworn in, I had three main priorities. Number one, the infrastructure of the office. Number two, focusing on violent offenders. And number three, creating a pathway to deal with quality-of-life offenses that ensured accountability, but not an arrest or a criminal record. When I say rebuilding the office, I'm not talking about only the additions of attorneys, law clerks, and support staff, but also the culture, the morale, and the reputation of Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office. The attorneys and staff that have continued to remain in this office represent some of the hardest, most sincere, dedicated public servants our city has. The commitment to the residents, the work of ensuring public safety is unwavering, but the work can wear down even the most devoted and determined over time. So an immediate focus had to be placed on the staff, not only increase the number of employees, but examining work conditions and resources, including salaries. Holding violent offenders accountable continues to be one of my top priorities as we work to improve public safety in Baltimore. We came in and immediately updated guidance for handgun violence and crime violence cases, including ghost guns. To further that accountability, we worked relentlessly to garner broad support for legislation that would increase the maximum penalty for illegal possession of firearms from three years to five years for individuals 21 ages and up. The passage of House Bill 824 brings about uniformity in the law and levels the playing field. It also makes it clear that in Maryland and especially Baltimore, we take a legal where-care and transport of firearms seriously, regardless of the age of the perpetrator. Then last week, we announced a citation initiative with our law enforcement partners. And also, I'd even like to give a thank you to Chairman Costello for that support. We took time, you taking time out of your busy schedule to join all of us. Our aim is to change the culture of accountability and improve safety in this city. This citation initiative is only for the adult jurisdiction. Individuals must be 18 years or older to qualify. Department of Juvenile Services will still handle juvenile offenses. In collaboration with Baltimore Police Department, we began issuing citations for quality-of-life crimes on Monday, June 12, 2023, and our office will hold a first citation docket the week of July 17, 2023 in the respective district courthouses. This new initiative is about fundamentally changing attitudes and creating personal responsibility so minor offenses do not lead to more severe crimes. Across our great city, residents have asked for a return to accountability in Baltimore, and this initiative is the first step of getting there. I cannot tell you the number of times since Thursday I've been stopped by the various residents, my handshake, pats on the back, thanking me for the citation initiative. We're not arresting our way out of the challenges that the city faces. Rather, we are providing an alternative to prosecution while imparting accountability for the quality-of-life offenses. My ultimate goal is to partner with all stakeholders to determine how we can establish a community court in our city. A court with resources, providers, all housed under one roof where individuals who lack the necessary support can be connected to services that facilitate an improvement in their own quality of life. As the Baltimore City State's Attorneys, my commitment lies in upholding the values of justice, equality, and public safety. Officers strive tirelessly to ensure that every resident, regardless of their background, socioeconomic status, or zip code, receives equitable treatment under the law. Through a proactive and holistic approach, we aim to not only prosecute crimes, but also address those root causes of foster rehabilitation and create pathways to prevent reoffending. Over the past five months, we've been able to do a number of things. For instance, we were able to bring everyone back into the office who was working from home. That happened on February 3rd, with the exception of the charging unit that was at one time in the jails, and now they're at home. We were able to reorganize and streamline the divisions of our office, as you'll see in our charts. With additional budgetary support, we are outlining a full-on recruitment strategy that will include enhanced recruitment for new and lateral hires in Maryland and nationwide. We'll have an added focus on recruiting a bright and diverse population of staff to support innovative prosecution in Baltimore. This plan incorporates aggressive recruitment initiatives, ensuring that we engage with Maryland law schools and launch a more targeted recruitment of experienced and talented individuals who seek to become a part of the innovative, technology-driven reform that I envision for this office. Of the 342 current employees, 161 of them are current Assistant State's Attorneys. My goal has been to have 50 new State's Attorneys since the election. We've already reached out to now that we have 40 new Assistant State's Attorneys, 12 of which who left the office and have returned since the election. Our recruitment reach has garnered attorneys from across the state, as well as nationally, including California, Louisiana, Pennsylvania, Minnesota, and the District of Columbia. In total, we have hired 59 new employees. 18 of these new employees are lateral attorneys, adding decades of litigation experience with diverse legal backgrounds to broaden the dimension of our strategic prosecution efforts. The total of 161 Assistant State's Attorneys, we currently have 25 vacant Assistant State's Attorney positions. And we have stabilized the attrition that the agency previously experienced. The right-sized number I feel for the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office that handles 40,000 cases a year is about 220 prosecutors. And that would mean we'd have maybe 59 additional hires. We've implemented a training agency-wide, a training program agency-wide. We started this on March 3rd with the courts closing every afternoon in the district court. Every Friday, excuse me, every other Friday in district court, prosecutors are in coordination with the courts and the Baltimore City Police Department to have a joint training effort. We've also implemented executive management training for supervisory staff, beginning with all Division Chiefs. We've established the State's Attorney's Advisory Council. This advisory council supports executive leadership through strategic thinking and specialized expertise to help the agency achieve its goal. The council provides critical insight and recommendations, not only myself, but executive team, and is another element of fostering inclusiveness and strategic management environment for the State's Attorney's Office. We try to enhance our community engagement, our efforts. We have completely restructured our Victim Witness Division, placing renewed focus on victims and witnesses of crime. We have strategic focus on how we can enhance the capacity to address the need to relocate victims and witnesses. For instance, from July 1, 2022 to July 2, 2023, the State's Attorney's Office spent around $53,710.3 on relocation of victims and witnesses. From January 3, 2023 until May 25, 2023, this office has now expended $98,850.81, almost double the amount of the months previous before. We have brought the Baltimore City Police Department, Monsey, and the Sheriff's Department into discussions relating on how we can enhance coordination and relocation efforts so that any gaps are filled and individuals who need relocation due to crime can be assisted as soon as possible. We absorbed the former Criminal Crime Control and Prevention Unit into our External Affairs Division. We have also placed renewed focus on youth and older adult outreach initiatives to serve this unique Baltimore population better identifying primary challenges and fostering partnerships with agencies that have the necessary resources needed to fully serve these individuals. We aim to meet each group where they are and bring the necessary support to them as they thrive in Baltimore. We've increased stakeholder engagement. I personally met with 18 agencies since January, including monthly meetings with the mayor, the police commissioner, and the U.S. Attorney. We've met with the U.S. Marshals, Homeland Security, ICE, ATF, and HIDA. I've been attending the CRC and commuting meetings around the city when I'm able. All these agencies have a role in addressing violent crime. My prosecutors are eager to partner with them. Of the five violent crime divisions, our numbers are, in fact, this. homicide division of 16 prosecutors, they received in the first six months of this, five months of this year, is 52 guilty's, 13 not guilty's, and they dismissed one case. The felony trial division of 10 prosecutors, 199 guilty's, 10 not guilty, and then they dismissed three. The Gun Violence Enforcement Division, GVAD, they handled 10 murders and felons in possession of handguns. There are 10 prosecutors. They received 109 guilty's, 22 not guilty's, and right now, they have not dismissed any cases. Felony narcotics, they also now do not only high-level, large amount of drugs, but they also do a lot of where-care and transport handgun cases as well. 10 prosecutors, 252 guilty's, nine not guilty's, and one dismissed. SVU, Special Victims Units, 17 prosecutors. We may have the rapes and sexual assaults. There were 110 guilty's, 12 not guilty's, and zero dismissed. And just last week, we announced a citation initiative. If you remember in my inaugural address, I told the Baltimore City Police Department that I was considering the previous policy of non-prosecution. I was rescinding that, and I did. But law enforcement hadn't been engaged in individuals with these types of offenses in three years, so we needed to know what it would look like in 2023. We issued updated guidance for offenses while securing buy-in and working on the logistics of the docket. We also had to build the infrastructure and partnerships to provide not only diversion methods, but ensure delivery of the wraparound services many of these offenders desperately need to put their lives on a better path. To continue this vital work, we are seeking your support in key areas of our budget. Our proposals are rooted in evidence-based practices and a deep understanding of the challenges faced by our city. They encompass initiatives that promote community engagement, enhance public safety, support victims of crime, and provide crucial resources to address the underlying cause of criminal behavior. By fostering trust, promoting dialogue, and prioritizing community well-being, we can collectively work towards reducing crime and creating safer neighborhoods. Furthermore, we recognize the importance of victims and witness services and the critical role they play in healing process. We propose increased funding to victim advocacy counseling and support programs, ensuring that survivors receive the care, resources, and justice they deserve. Lastly, our commitment to innovative and technology cannot be understated. That's why I requested an additional $3.5 million from the Governor's Office to address the shortages of our evidence review unit. That method is used to determine staffing on reviewing evidence, such as body-worn camera footage, and that's the biggest problem that we really have in my office right now, our office. It's by considering the number of sworn officers in a jurisdiction. So what I mean, that is for every 100 officers in a jurisdiction, there should be at least one staff member that's needed to process the video body-worn camera footage. And that's from GovTech.com 112221 article. For instance, Baltimore City says they have around 2,600 budgeted sworn officers. Ball accounts are working with around 2,200 officers. This equates to needing almost 23 additional staff members to review and process evidence. Currently, we have four Individual Support Evidence Review Unit. They also have a supervisor. This number does not include the evidence received of body-worn camera and other organizations such as the Sheriff's Department, MDTA, MTA, which further highlights the need for enhancement. By comparison, Anarondo County employs approximately 870 sworn officers, and Anarondo County State's Attorney's Budget is $756,000. The Evidence Review Unit has 13 full-time and one part-time individual to review this body camera footage. Reviewing body camera footage, it lessens the workload of the actual prosecutor to focus instead of spending all those hours. For instance, homicide prosecutors, they may spend almost 70, 80, 100 hours on a murder case, 40 of which could be reviewing body camera footage. For every single officer on that scene, that prosecutor has to look at every single moment of that body camera footage. It may only be two minutes, no minutes, or 10 minutes of importance. If we had individuals, we could reduce the workload of those homicide prosecutors and all the prosecutors in the office. The second example is the Baltimore County State's Attorney's Office. There are approximately 800 to 1100 sworn officers in Baltimore County, and the State's Attorney's Office has a staff of either 12 to 14, between 12 and 14 additional employees. One attorney and 11 evidence specialists are employed to watch that body camera footage. Baltimore City is a much larger jurisdiction, both neighboring, compared to both of the neighboring jurisdictions. The number of sworn officers is more than 57% higher than other jurisdictions. The Baltimore City Police Department estimates each officer will use over 1 terabyte of data, 200 terabytes a year. Just as important and more challenging are the processes to deal with the Police Department CCTV and private surveillance camera footage. There are more than 800 CCTV cameras and over 600 private surveillance cameras participating in their surveillance footage program. Adequate resources to support this capacity will help us manage this and any additional video evidence we may receive. We urge you to consider budgetary allocations that empower us to leverage cutting cost tools and data-driven strategies in our fight against crime. By embracing technological advancements, we can enhance efficiency, streamline operations, and ultimately make our criminal justice system more effective and equitable. In conclusion, I stand here today with the utmost gratitude for your attention and consideration. Together, let us continue our collective journey towards a safer, more just Baltimore. Your support in these budgetary decisions will undoubtedly have a profound impact on the lives of our residents, the strength of our communities, and trajectory of our city. I look forward to engaging in a fruitful discussion and working hand-in-hand to build a brighter future for all of us. Right now, we have our PowerPoint presentation.
State's Attorney, I'm going to ask you to go through this as briefly as possible.
Yes. You have, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you already had the remark, the PowerPoint presentation. Just basically, on the first slide, talk about the fiscal 2024 Agency Overview. Talks about the mission of our office, what we feel really is our motto, facts, fairness, accountability, collaboration, technology, and we want to set the standard.
And colleagues, this was, I think Nate uploaded this to our OneDrive in the last hour, so it should be in there. Yep.
So, next slide, we see the State's Attorney. We have Service 115 Prosecution of Criminals, Service 781 Administration, Service 786 Victim and Witness Services. Basically breaking down the parts of the budget in which we're focused on. With the Prosecution of Criminals, we talk about the major budget items. Fiscal year, we're asking for $44,606,103. This recommendation includes $1.2 million for promotional pay increases for Assistant State's Attorney positions that were included in fiscal year 2023. We thanked the previous administration for getting that, and the budget is fully implemented now in 2024. Recommended budget includes $3 million in state funding based on the action of the state budget to provide funding for the Victim Witness Services. With the Administration, State's Attorney. Major budget items, recommended budget includes $300,000 that will be used for hardware and software investments and staffing, training, and professional development. We did ask for $750,000, but we believe we're going to receive maybe $300,000. Hardware and software funding will address system upgrades and improvements, funding for training, professional development, and focus on reducing turnover at critical roles of the agency. Victim and Witness Services, major budget items. The recommended budget maintains the current level of service. And then we have, and I gave you the numbers previously, we have a number of slides and charts that talk about violent crime dispositions 2023. First, we start with homicide, GVAD, SVU, and felony dispositions for our entire office. And we had 480 guilty, and we break it down and everything on that chart. The following page, we look at homicides, breaking down those numbers, I gave them earlier. GVAD, we break those numbers down. SVU, we break those numbers down. And general felony, we break those numbers down. One of the things we also want to break down is the numbers. We're working collaboratively with the mayor's office and GVRS. We talk about the total of cases that we've had, what's been going on, the guilty's, not guilty's, no process stats, and just talking about how, you know, we have been partnering with the mayor and the GVRS program. And the last, one of the last slides talks about staffing. You can see where we are overall staffing from fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 2023. The overall staffing, as well as the Assistant State's Attorneys. And the last page is focused on the citation offenses that we've recently talked about in developing the Citation Docket. So I wanted to go ahead and go over that with you. At this moment in time, I thank you, Chairman, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. State's Attorney. We sent you a letter on May 19 asking you to respond by June 2, which you did. I want to thank you for that. I'm sure that we'll be getting into specifics of that. First, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. State's Attorney, for joining us today. Just real quick, I know we were looking at the slides on GVAD homicide. Could you give us like a five-year, either linear or bar graph to just show the rates associated with convictions?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
So, we were just looking at a couple high-level violent crime slides. I think I saw one unit was GVAD and another was homicide. Could you guys just put together, for major crimes, a either line or bar chart showing the past five-year conviction rates?
Yes, we can go ahead and put that together. We'll get it to you, let's say, by the end of the week.
Perfect. Sticking on conviction rates, do you consider plea deals a conviction in your conviction rate?
Yes, plea deals are part of the conviction.
I agree, totally agree. When we talk about the Citation Program, if someone is, first of all, with the consent decree, can someone be giving a citation for no other reason other than a citation? Say, for instance, like loitering. So, if I'm standing in front of a store or in some place, can the police officer or law enforcement give me a citation specifically for loitering only?
Yes, they can. Now, there are a number of things, from my understanding, that police must do. First, under the consent decree, if I'm not mistaken, I think the police can better answer this question, but it's my understanding that on this consent decree, there's no, we're not arresting. And it is suggested the citation is the method. But when you look at it, the first thing is a warning. Hey, you need to leave. And then, at that later time, the officer, if they decide to use their discretion to give a citation for loitering that moment in time, they can.
Got it. What if I don't have an identification card? Then what happens?
Well, the biggest thing for us is that that type of behavior is stopped. For instance, loitering. If the officer says, hey, you know, you're loitering, For instance, loitering, if the officer says, hey, you know, you're loitering, and the individual walks away, then the loitering that was there in front of that establishment that stopped maybe some other residents from going in now has ceased. At that moment in time, it's upon the officer what they decide to do. Sometimes officers may know the individuals, that's why we also look at the body camera. But, you know, our focus isn't the punitive, our focus is to try to get individuals to wrap around services.
The concern that I have, and I'm not sure if you've seen with your past experiences, you know, working in Annapolis, when we did decriminalization of marijuana, and we went to solely citation-type of model, 85% of the citations in that next year in Baltimore City were to African-American residents. And an overwhelming percentage of those were to residents in West Baltimore and particular areas. Are you concerned at all about the disparate enforcement, like we've seen in the past, particularly as relates to citations? And if so, what is your office going to do to ensure that it's enforced fairly and equally throughout the city?
Well, you're always going to be concerned about that. You know, look, being a black man in criminal justice system, it's one of the things I'm always going to be concerned about, make sure the system works very fairly. But one of the things we've talked about is we're going to be focusing in Federal Hill, Fells Point, some of the open container issues. But we're also going to look at the data. We're going to have one prosecutor, a senior prosecutor, who's going to be the first one who's going to be handling the citation dockets. And we'll be able to look to see, are there more citations being written in West Baltimore than in the East Side? What's going on with those? Who are these citations being issued to? That's why I feel very good in the sense that it's once a month that gives us the opportunity to really look and to see, it's almost like a pilot program from now until the end of the year. We'll look at the data, see what's going on. But I think what's so unique about this is the wraparound services. You know, for me, to be able to have an individual who didn't have a high school diploma, wants to get a GED, tired of maybe hanging out doing whatever they were doing, but now to say, hey, just give us five or six hours of community service. And our focus is the community service in the neighborhood where the citation was written. So that's very important. And then from there, saying, okay, now you've cleaned up Ms. Johnson's, you know, block, the stoop for Ms. Johnson, but now you have an opportunity to get that GED. You're not going to spend any money, you have the GED, you have the opportunity to have the wraparound services. We give you the job training, we give you the skills, and then before you know it, we'd like to try to find them a job. So I am concerned about that, but I also recognize that we needed to do something for the people who are out there that time and time again are struggling to figure out where they can go to try to have that opportunity. And that's what our hope is.
Now, we talked about it from a geography perspective. You can also look at it, I assume, from a race perspective as well.
Oh, without a doubt.
And you guys are going to keep those statistics and be able to report out on us as relates to the citation program?
Yes, that's one of the things we want to do. Look, our focus is, we need to do something.
Yeah.
Is it going to be perfect? No, it's never going to be perfect at the very beginning. We're going to look at it, we're going to tweak it, we're going to try to understand what we can do. I mean, look, one of the things we also talk about, look, is the dirt bike. But we also partner with B-360 and what they're able to do. I mean, the members of Congress gave B-360 $3 million for their deep impacted wraparound services to still allow these young people to ride their dirt bikes in a place that's safe for them, learning about how to use dirt bikes, how to ride dirt bikes, and to do the thing safe and in a safer manner and a safer way. So it's not just the State's Attorney, it's MONZI, it's so many other organizations that are doing the good work already. We just wanted to go ahead and be a part of it.
Understood. Will transportation be provided?
To court?
No, to the, whatever wraparound service that they're assigned to.
Well, this moment in time, we haven't discussed it. I would need to sit down and talk with all the providers.
Understood. Will the, when the citation is given, does the individual know that, know their arraignment date at that point?
They will. So when the citation's given, it gives their arraignment date, the time, the location, what the offense is to them at that moment in time when they're given that citation by that officer. Also, it's on the body worn camera, and the officer will be able to see everything that's going on.
Is there any follow-up from your office or the court system after that citation is given?
Well, the first time, it won't be, let's say, there's an individual who misses court. At that moment in time, my understanding, talking to the judges, is that they'll just issue a subpoena summons for another court date. That being the arraignment. First, we have an arraignment date. If an individual wishes to avail themselves of those wraparound services, then they'll do the community service, and then once the community service is accomplished, then that case will be automatically null-processed.
When are they afforded the opportunity to potentially have counsel?
They can have it at the arraignment, but the public defender's office, they'll get involved, they said, later on, if we decide to prosecute the individual. However, if an individual still goes into the public defender's office, my understanding, if they still go into the public defender's office and ask for an attorney for the arraignment, I believe that's something they can be able to have as well.
Understood. So, again, individual's given the citation, they show up to court, they may not show up to court, but no one contacts them in between, which is fine, this citation process. If they don't show up to arraignment, the court will still proceed, they'll just be given a summons to appear at their next court date.
Well, their next court date most likely will be another arraignment.
Another, okay, so they will be given a summons to appear at another arraignment, which time they have the ability to appear to court. If they don't show up there, I guess at that point, they could be violated, is that how it works?
Well, it depends on what the judge and the court wants to do. I mean, we also have to look at it from a standpoint, if, let's say it's a loitering or trespass, and that officer is consistently on that particular beat, that area, and they never see this individual again, then kind of it's solved its purpose, and there's really no need to go after this individual on a loitering or trespass. We have to use our sense to just not go after individuals because a person didn't come to court, but we have to look to see really what the offense was.
So it's kind of like citation, what is it, arrest, no, something by abatement?
Yeah, it would be abated by whatever.
Abated by citation, almost, defenses.
In some ways. And we really have to do, our focus once again is to wrap around services and to stop that behavior, has to be some level of accountability. Now, does that mean that no one can come to court? No, we're not doing that either. So it's going to be fluid, we have to see what's going to happen, we have to see what's working. But once again, our biggest focus and goal is not the punitive, it's not the punishment, it is the resources. We were talking to people. It wasn't my level of expertise to put this together. It was Ms. Trish Deros, who is here tonight, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Deros, may I ask her to come and talk about what she thought about what they, what went into planning and putting this process together? Ms. Deros is my office, is the building manager of East Side. She has 33 years of experience in Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office and is truly an expert in dealing with a number of organizations that do this type of work within the community.
You said he answered everything, right?
We're hoping to provide wraparound services for numerous agencies. We've been in contact with MONZI, B-360, Department of Social Services, the Hope Center. We're hoping to get Healthcare for the Homeless, United Way, who used to be partners, and several of our other programs. We are hoping to work with Her Resiliency, which is those who need safe havens for street workers. And our goal is to provide wraparound services. If the defendants appear at their citation docket, they will be advised, they'll be arraigned, they'll be offered to go to the court commissioner and qualify for service as a public defender. They can do that in addition to performing the community service. If they perform their community service before their trial date, the cases will be dismissed prior to the trial date and will be automatically expunged from their criminal history so that it will not appear, and they can continue to engage in wraparound services. We're also partnering with the District Court Reentry Program, which is a district court program operated through Judge Pastore of the District Court, and she offers job training programs for any individuals, whether they're part of the criminal justice system actively or not, and they may participate in that program. The citations will be issued by numerous agencies, and hopefully, they will be constitutionally issued to defendants, and that the individuals will show up to court, they will be given an assigned date. If they don't show up the first time, a, probably a reset and reissue of the subpoena for the second time. If they don't show up the second time, we will probably review the body worn camera or try to talk to the officer to see what's going on, whether they've even seen the individual in the neighborhood. Identification is an issue, and has historically been an issue. However, with the upgraded technology, we're able to, officers on the street are able to identify individuals, they have access to MVA, so they can look up the individual's information if they're able to provide it. They can look and see if they have a state-issued ID without the defendant having it physically on their person. They can also look if the defendant has had a prior criminal history, whether he has a SID number, they can look up a prior booking photo, and they can make identifications that way. In addition, you have the body worn camera for most agencies that are using them, which will show the defendant, and if an individual comes to court and says, it wasn't me, we can look at the body worn camera right in the courtroom, and we can look and identify and determine whether or not someone, his brother, used his information, and it wasn't him.
And the assumption is, all the programs, wraparound services, are free to the individual, right?
Yes, all the services are free to the individual.
And just one last question. If someone is given a citation, we have to pay a penalty, if they cannot afford to pay it, what takes place then?
There is no fee.
Not for the program, but they could be given a penalty through the court, right?
Well, if they want to go to trial, or if they want to enter a guilty plea, instead of performing the community service in exchange for a null-process, I would assume that the court would somehow work out, either the defendant's performed community service in lieu of paying a fine, or the defendant's can tell the court what fine they could afford if that is what they chose to do.
Understood. And last question, as it relates to, I guess, following the requirements of the court and completing the program, it's going to be on the program to identify that person X has met the requirements and has completed and given that information back to the court? How does that work?
So we will keep a list. The providers will be in the courthouse on the day of the citation docket, especially the community service program. Individuals will register that day and be given a form to complete community service. We will have a list of all the individuals who were assigned community service, the date that they should have completed by. We will ask reports from community service, and historically, they've been very good about it in prior programs, and they just send us a list. For example, if the defendant's given community service on July 17th, on August 17th, 30 days later, we would hope that that five hours of community service is completed, and we will get a report from community service that that has been completed. We will then advance the cases, which are going to be scheduled for trial in about 45 days. So 15 days prior to their trial date, we will advance their citation case, and we will then null-process it in advance, so they don't need to come to court if they successfully completed their community service component.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, just for the committee, I think the State's Attorney has agreed to provide us five-year conviction rates on violent offenses, like was placed on the slide, as well as the ongoing tracking of the demographics associated with the issuance of citations and the outcomes.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. State's Attorney.
Thank you. Nate, you got that? Thank you very much. Councilman Stokes and then Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How you doing, State's Attorney? My question is, if someone currently on probation, open row, is given a citation for low-level crime like loitering or open container, can they be violated on their previous charge and sent back to prison?
Well, technically, you could always be violated almost for anything. But our whole focus would be no, that's not a violation type of offense that we're looking at. You're looking at more of a serious offense. But also, you need to understand, we would need to understand what they were on probation for. Let's say an individual was on probation because they wanted to go to trial for open container, instead of doing the five or six hours community service, and they come back with another open container. I think the judge would probably say, hey, you know, maybe you need to go to alcohol treatment program, I could see something like that. But an individual that may be on probation for, let's say, a first-degree assault or violent felony, and there's a low, a quality-of-life crime, no, that's not the type of case. But once again, for us, if you just do the community service, it's done, it's never happening. The only way you violate is if you decide you wanted to go to trial and you're found guilty. That's the only way you would be able to violate. Just the natural citation and doing the community service hours, no, there is no violation.
Thank you. And one other, there was, there's a program through, I can't remember, one of the judges here in Baltimore, when somebody is convicted, they go through the court system. I know you know about it, but a lot of times, back then, former state's attorney wasn't arresting. So my question to the judge was, why are we waiting for people to get arrested and then have that state funding? Have you looked into how you could use some of that money that's already allocated for that type of program?
What's the DECREP, and we mentioned that they're one of our partners, and anyone can go into that program. And so we're partnering with that program because that court, the judge, Judge Pastore, has money for that particular program, and we have partnered with that program. Look, at the end of the day, our goal isn't to have more people involved in the criminal justice system. Our goal is to give these individuals the wraparound services so they won't be involved in the criminal justice system.
Well, I only was saying, can you tap into some of the funny for some of the programs you have already? Not to wait till somebody get to that level, but that state money, can you kind of split it in half, what you trying to do, and were they already in place? Then you already have more funding for some of the programs that you are like implementing right now.
I think from our standpoint, we first want to get established and see where we're moving, and then understand the funding that is needed. But right now, the way that we've put it together is, the other organization's already doing the work, we just want to be a part of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a request, can you give a list of your partners that you work with, kind of give it to the committee? Because a lot of times, you don't invent the wheel when somebody's already there with the same programs.
For the citation docket?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Councilman. We'll go ahead and get, we'll be able to get that information to you probably tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're still working on a complete list of resources.
Oh, ma'am, ma'am, oh, gotta use a mic.
That is, so Ms. Deros, who spoke earlier, just let me know that they're still working on the complete list, so we can get you the list that we have, different individuals we're still working with.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Nate, got it? Thank you. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for joining us, Mr. State's Attorney. Standing on the citation docket, the, some of the, could you just walk us through, I guess, the rationale for the list that we have, that you've provided? You know, some of these, I think, pretty, are pretty obvious to me as far as the public safety value of increasing enforcement. But things like hacking, you know, I don't really understand the value to the citizens to, you know, when I think about like, especially in my district, when I think about folks that are hacking, you know, there's some older seniors I know that work at a grocery store and hang out and help take people home with their groceries, and I don't really understand, like, in that scenario, why that person needs to show up and do community service for having sort of an informal taxi service. I mean, I get it, the laws are the laws, but I don't know how that makes the city safer.
Well, for us, it was pretty simple. These are the laws that are already on the books, a number of the laws from the city council. And so I feel like, look, now we brought it to your attention, if it's something you feel strong about, then please repeal it. I agree the same way about the hacking like you do. However, it's the law that was already on the book, and the citation was already in the book. Like, for instance, one of the things you don't see is sex work, because you can't give a citation for sex work. You can either arrest. We don't want to arrest for sex work, and even though you know this better than anyone, Councilman, sex work and, and sex trafficking look very similar, we wanted to sit down and say, before we move in that direction, let's find a better way to try to do this, how we can go ahead and find out individual being sex trafficked, but not give additional trauma to the sex worker. And so with us, this was, these were the laws that were already on the books. Because these laws were already on the books, we put them out there. We put them out there to say, hey, these are, if an officer gives you a citation, this is a possibility, these are the maximum sentences for these, that's all from the educational standpoint. However, if you, the city council or the legislature feels like, hey, this doesn't make sense, by all means, please repeal it. Like I said, I don't necessarily agree with the hacking, but, you know, I always tell people, I don't make the laws, y'all hired me to enforce them.
I mean, I would, as a quick follow-up, I would say, that's a thing that we could get behind, but I mean, there's also like citations for like putting up "We Buy Houses" signs, or tearing down a city, piece of city property, you know what I mean? Like, there's any number of things that are, I mean, we can put a more comprehensive list that's triple the size of things that we could be sending people to diversion court for that are things that are the laws. I was just asking like this particular list, obviously, because this isn't the most comprehensive everything that you can be cited for in the city of Baltimore. So I guess, the rationale for this list is what I'm looking for.
It was more on the criminal citations, some of those other things with civil citations, we're looking from the criminal citation standpoint. You know, our standpoint was, these are the criminal citations that were on the books, and these are the criminal citations, if the officers had the opportunity to enforce any of them at that moment in time. So it's more or less just, hey, we want to inform the community of the criminal citations that the officers could potentially write a citation for.
Got it, okay. I have more on this, Mr. Chair, but I'll wait for my next round.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. State's Attorney, in the response that you provided, I'm just pulling it up now, we had requested information on the vacancies that you have, in one second here, for supervisors, I believe there were eight vacancies, 45, 70?
Yes, Chair.
Yep. And then on the ASA?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
I believe it's seventeen, a total of 25.
Okay, can you talk about what your plans are to get those recognized, and you've certainly made some progress, what your plans are to get the rest of those filled?
The thing is, a perfect example, the day we interviewed three new people, potentially new state's attorneys. So, when you're trying to go ahead and fill vacancies in terms of laterals, there are only so many prosecutors out there, so many attorneys out there, and then individuals that want to work in Baltimore City that also want to work in the criminal field. And so, once we've now targeted those individuals, we have quite a few laterals and quite a few people returning, you are able to try to make those hires as quick as possible. The next wave of hires, from our standpoint, were individuals that were law clerks that passed the bar in February. Now, we've hired a couple of those individuals. Our next hire will be individuals that are law clerks for judges that pass the bar, and the barred attorneys, they become available in September. We have a number of that we've already sent job opportunities and made requests to, and offered jobs to, that I know, if I'm not mistaken, that a minimum of three right now, could be even more, because we're still interviewing those individuals, that will start in September. And then you have the individuals who are in law school that just graduated, that are studying for the bar. Some of those individuals are going to come into our office and be law clerks. Once they pass the bar, we then have the opportunity to retain their services come December. Our goal is 50, that was our goal, we're at 40 right now. So we definitely feel we can reach our goal. The other thing that we realized, to be honest, one of the things that has been concerning to me, I don't see the diversity within the field as I once did. So we're going to go to Chicago to make sure that we have the opportunity, the National Black Prosecutors Association, to try to recruit other individuals from other parts of the country. So we want to make sure that as many diverse organizations and groups are represented by prosecutors in our office, one of the things that I saw is that the Latino community wasn't as represented as I would have liked to have seen in our office. And we've hired a number of Latino individuals to be prosecutors in our office, because as we have a growing Latino community, we wanted to make sure that prosecutors spoke Spanish, to make sure that the victims, when they come to court, they feel as comfortable as possible. So, it's been in different waves to recruit, but one of the things that we needed to do, we have the people behind me and the people in front of me have been some of the best recruiters, because they've told their friends, they've told their colleagues, they're, that, hey, come to the state's attorney's office, there are a lot of positive things you can do. And also, once again, one of the things that has And also, once again, one of the things that has helped somewhat for us is the entry level salary that, without a doubt, I have to thank the previous administration because they were able to get that.
Thank you. So it sounds like recruitment of entry level attorneys, by and large, really is cyclical around education, when they pass the bar, when they finish their clerkship for the most part?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. State's Attorney and your staff. My question is, I've consistently received complaints from my constituents in my district in reference to the open air drug market. When I questioned this in the past, even with the past administration, I was always told that it's a Baltimore City Police Department issue. With that new issue citation that you guys have coming forth for low level crimes, what would change from the Baltimore City Police Department as far as the resource perspective? Would this new approach also break up the open air drug markets? In reference to, will Baltimore City Police Department and the state's attorney's office, like, resources go back to like violent crimes?
Um, thank you, Councilman Glover. I'll talk first about the citation and then I'll talk about the open air drug markets. One of the things on the citation docket is the police have the opportunity to write citations for drug possession, CDS possession. And we're trying to get those individuals into drug treatment programs, whether outpatient or inpatient drug treatment programs. But look, let's be honest, an individual goes to drug treatment program, they're not always going to be successful right away. And we're trying to say, we support that process as long as you're moving in a direction to try to be in drug treatment programs. So that hopefully cuts out the equation, the user, somewhat. Now, in the open air drug markets, one of the things we recognized we needed to do was work with the police department. We've had to reestablish those relationships and we had to go after drug organizations. I want to talk about one case that we had where we worked. It was GBRS Division Program. We went after an individual, a group that was selling fentanyl. And we received almost a half kilo of fentanyl that we were able to get because they had an open air drug market. And they were doing things like that. We have a new division that's not necessarily new per se, but we've reenacted it and it's a division that is very focused on those types of cases. The head division is, division is Ms. Sam Mildenberg. And actually, I'd like her to just come up and just give you a brief overview about what her division, MIU, does. How we're now focused on looking at drug organizations, drug crews, some of which are pretty violent in the city. And that should hopefully talk about the third part of your question.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, so the Major Investigations Unit is officially up and running and we are actively recruiting more senior attorneys to the unit. And we're working in tandem with both the Narcotics Unit, who's being led currently by Jennifer Brady, and the G.V.A.D. Unit, who's being led by Patrick Grazi, and obviously homicide with Michael Duntie. A lot of what we're doing in the Major Investigations Unit is sort of twofold. So there's the investigations into the large narcotics cases, which is what you're speaking of. Where we work currently with GBRS through their G.V.U. program to sort of do investigations into multi-month time periods to sort of dismantle groups that are in those areas. So instead of running in, racing in, and arresting someone that you see doing a hand-to-hand transaction, we take our time, slow it down, and figure out, okay, who's the person who just did that hand-to-hand transaction? Who is supplying them with drugs? Who is supplying them with drugs? And so on and so forth. And so, sometimes in the community level, it may seem like nothing's happening. There's oftentimes, there is. It's just we can't run in. If we arrest Citizen X for dealing drugs on that corner, they get a bail, they get out, or they get released on their own recognizance and they're back to doing it the next day. So the focus of the Major Investigations Unit is not a reactive type of arrest, but a proactive, long-term investigation. So when we do make big arrests, we make them in large conspiracies. We make kingpin arrests as it relates to drug crime. But the other focus of the Major Investigations Unit is to the violence. I'm sure everyone here has seen the uptick in that. And a lot of what we do is work with federal partners such as the ATF, along with BPD, and do, for an example, one example would be a NIBIN-led investigation, where you have a bunch of shootings and they all come back to the same gun. And we sort of run the investigation through the gun and how does that relate? We have current investigations involved with them right now, where we're looking into groups who we believe are responsible for dozens of murders in some of the cases. And we work in tandem with Mr. Duntie and his unit to identify those cases and prosecutors who can help into that sort of major investigation into these big violent organizations. Oftentimes, you'll see that drugs and violence go hand in hand. So, you know, sometimes you're looking into a drug case, you may have a search and seizure warrant where you receive a phone, you get a search and seizure warrant for the phone and you uncrack a huge criminal organization that is conducting violent crimes. It's just not fast-paced. It doesn't happen in a week, it doesn't always happen in thirty days, and sometimes it's not ninety days. These investigations can take six months, they can take a year. On the federal side, they can be multi-year investigations. We definitely try to keep them shorter on the state's side because there is such a need in those communities. But that is what we have brought back to the office and we are currently up and running on multiple investigations.
And I clearly hear what you say, but I'm basically focused on the open drug air market. So we've seen it in the last administration and I'm starting to see it also here in this administration. I know the police department has them making arrests so you guys can prosecute the case. So what I'm saying are you guys like pushing to the police department to make these arrests because we still have seniors that are afraid to go to the corner store because of the open drug air market.
I think that part of it, again, in speaking to sort of that longer term investigation, in order to dismantle what you're referring to as an open air drug market, we have to know who's supplying that market. You know, just taking off the low level hitter whose deals, tomorrow, there'll be a new guy out there. And so the police-
But the low-hood level hitter is the one that may be going out to hit another individual as far as violently in the neighborhood.
Correct, but if all we can do is arrest them on a simple possession, there's not much, as I'm sure you've all seen, the judges aren't going to give them a ten-year sentence or something, you know, out of the norm, they're going to have a very low sentence and they'll be back out. So our goal on the major investigation side is to make sure that when we get to the sentencing stage, that we've dismantled large groups and that they're going to jail for a very long time. So they're not out in thirty days disrupting your community again. They're not out in six months disrupting your community again. We want to make sure that we don't just knock off one, that we knock off a huge group of them. Again, we work in tandem with the Narcotics Unit that is also being rebuilt. When I joined the office, they were down to just a handful of prosecutors and now they've gained, I think, an additional four or five at this point. When that unit gets up and running as well, they will be able to do sort of those mid-level narcotics investigations, which we have restarted as well. And that will also have a much greater impact in communities where they see open air drug markets. Again, it's, it just can't happen overnight if we want it done right.
Thank you. Also, Councilman, I also have my deputy in terms of violent, Tom Donnelly, also answer the question a little bit.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. One of your questions dealt with resources and how those resources are being used. I will tell you that tracking the numbers through our felony narcotics unit, the amount of indictments we are seeing is outpacing the number of dispositions that are occurring. And one of the questions we had for BPD, and I'm not going to speak for BPD, but I think what they've indicated is that their narcotics arrests are up fifty percent this year over last year, which tracks with our data that the number of indictments coming down is quite a bit more than what we're closing right now. That should change also as we build up the unit. It was just a handful, two, three people when we got there. And I think right now, it's currently between seven and ten attorneys. So that's continuing to be built up. As far as the resources go, one of the things we have to do, and we have been doing, is coordinating with the Baltimore Police Department lab because it also puts a strain on the lab to get all these narcotics tested. So we have to start figuring out what, you know, prioritizing with BPD lab to make sure the resources are being used in the most effective way. And I will say, the analysts that are both employed by BPD and the state's attorney's office have put a new angle on prosecution where it's really being data-driven. And for instance, those corners you're talking about are being identified a lot earlier by the organizations than they used to be. So that targeted enforcement can occur where it's needed. So we're trying to use the resources the best we can and to work smarter, not necessarily just harder.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to go through the criteria for the community service alternatives. I'm having, just based on the statistics that are coming out of BPD related to the number of reported crimes in the city, I'm having, I just want to reconcile some of those numbers. So the Baltimore City Police Department indicated that, to date, there have been about thirteen thousand crimes that have been reported in Baltimore so far this year. When we talk about the criteria for that, about ten percent of those crimes actually have an open warrant served on them. And I'm trying to really understand how your criteria is really going to match the large swath of crimes that are being committed in the city of Baltimore. So for the public's knowledge, it says to be eligible for community service alternatives, the individual must not have any pending charges for a crime of violent or handgun violence. Currently, not currently be on probation for a parole of a crime of violence or handgun violence. And C, have no outstanding warrants.
In terms of the individuals, I think a lot of times what we see is the same individuals often committing those types of more violent crimes. And so we're looking at the individuals that sometime may be on the cusp, that sometime are followers. Sometimes you may just have a big group of individuals. For instance, if the officer now has the ability to give a citation for a group that's loitering, you best believe if an individual has a warrant, they're going to leave that area. They may not loiter as much. So therefore, what it also helps to do is help to quell, hopefully, some of the violence because that individual who may commit the violence won't be there. Now, our whole focus of the citation court is for the individuals who need all the wraparound service, the low-level quality of life individual. The individual with the warrants that we're looking at who's doing the violence, oh, we're trying to arrest them, we're trying to prosecute them. And so the citation may actually allow us to identify that an individual who has an open warrant for something like that. So it helps the officers in terms of trying to identify some of those individuals. And at that moment in time, from our standpoint, it's another tool in the police officer's toolbox so they can do their job hopefully more effectively and more efficiently.
Okay. I just want to clarify something that you said earlier regarding the open warrants for an individual. So the citations, will they not be used? Or will they be used to determine like any, or to kind of bring in any persons that have an open warrant?
No. If you have a open warrant for a violent offense, of course, the courts, you miss court. And it's for, but we, the court finds out that you have a warrant for a violent offense, doesn't matter. The bigger warrant is what the court is looking at, is looking for.
Okay.
Now, if you have a warrant for the, as we listen to the dirt bikers, if you have a warrant for open container?
Yeah.
And you miss court, I mean, that's not something that we want to spend money on, trying to hunt down an individual for that.
Yeah.
You know, that may be something, that individual who's down at Fell's Point, you know, from New York, down here drinking with their buddies, hey, I missed it, you know what? Let me send in a hundred dollars. You know, and that's something that individual can afford to pay the fine.
Yeah.
And so we have to be very smart and strategic with the way we do this. Look, you know, I was here, I remember what it was like with the mass incarceration. Everybody was being drugged in the court under, for any issue, any problem. We're not going to do that this time. We're going to look to see what makes sense and what doesn't make sense. And we're going to make sure that we're looking at the body camera footage, as Ms. Dero said, to see, one, can we prove the case? Okay, we can prove the case. What is the citation for? And, you know, I can, a large part of them may just pretty much be abated by the actual citation. And then we'll move on.
Yeah, and I definitely appreciate that response. But just to follow up on Councilman Glover's point, the exact persons that we're intending to target in these open air drug markets are not being, they're not even in this criteria for this citation whatsoever. And so it's going to lead to, it's going to lead to much, you know, longer and different complex conversations that, you know, I'm not sure it's being thought about when we're looking at the criteria. So I look forward to the briefing, the upcoming briefing that you're going to have with the Public Safety and Government Operations. But what I'm saying is that it's definitely where the people that we want to target are the ones that are actually in the open air drug markets.
Well, what I will say, the open air drug market, the officer sees them selling drugs. One of the charges that we're also now talking about implementing that we had in the past. So say, a person's out there hustling, open air drug market, the police come up, give them a citation. It's two pieces. But the officer has been sitting there watching them sell. The officer now has the opportunity to charge them with attempt drug distribution, which technically is a misdemeanor, but it holds the same penalty as a felony. At that moment in time, the officer has to make a decision whether they want to go ahead and do the citation or potentially arrest because of the open air drug market. And so the officer still will have an additional tool in their toolbox. Just not, just because it's on a citation docket, doesn't mean that you don't see additional tools that they can use also. Still have to do old-fashioned police work, still talking to us. But it could also be that our MIU is watching that entire organization to come in with everybody to get the entire organization out the way. There are a number of different ways in which we have to hit that drug, that open air drug market. I definitely understand what you're saying. I've been in those same community association meetings and you're right, the older people in our city are afraid to go out there. And so for us, we can't just hit the kids on the corner selling. We have to hit the middle guys and we definitely have to hit the guys who are bringing it in. And without the product, they can't sell anything. And so we're trying to hit all three of them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Mr. State's Attorney.
Likewise.
I'm going to switch up a little bit, not too much, we're always talking about crime here. Particularly, I want to focus on youth violence. As you are very aware, we've seen a significant increase in youth violence over the last year or so. Particularly picking up toward the end of last year. And I'm really curious what your office's role is in addressing and understanding the problem and the steps we're taking to mitigate youth violence.
You know, I'll discuss a little bit that I'd like to, is Chung here? That I, I thought we have a new head of juveniles, so she couldn't make it. But I'll address the issue. One of the problems that we have, when you look at the juvenile court, everything has changed. Twenty twenty-one, you had the Juvenile Justice Act. On the Juvenile Justice Act, DJS is the ones who have the power, they have the say. So let's look at it from two parts. First, let's look at the lower level quality of life issues involving the juveniles. They come in the system. We, the state's attorney's office, don't have a single clue what's going in, who's coming in, what services, any service whatsoever being given to these young people. Unfortunately, when we deal with the young people, we deal with the young people and they've committed a vicious, violent, heinous act. When they've committed that vicious, violent, heinous act, then our focus has to be on the victims. We still care about the young people, without a doubt, but what happened with the victims? For instance, when you have a sixteen-year-old kid who's alleged to have shot and murdered someone, at that moment in time, we're looking to victims, the victims' families. Where we would have liked to have been involved in the early stages where DJS has that opportunity where they see this young person who's twelve, thirteen, fourteen, missing school, getting in fights, having that first handgun at fourteen, fifteen, we may not know anything about that. And so that's been very, very difficult for us. The other issue that's been very difficult for us is working in the past with DJS. Right now, we've had the opportunity to meet the new chair, the new head of juvenile, Mr. Sheraldi. It was a phenomenal meeting. It was really good. We talked about our issues, we talked about our concerns. I had my staff there talk about how we would like to be more involved during that process. I feel like he really heard us and we're looking to try to work more collaboratively with them. But in the past, Department of Juvenile Services with young people has almost been what's behind that door. And we haven't been able to see behind that door because the law won't allow us to in that regard. However, unfortunately, the law does say, once this young person's committed a violent crime, what do we do with them? From our standpoint, you also look at the services that are available. I think there may be one, if not two, locations they can send all the juveniles in our state that have committed some of this violent, some of these violent acts. And so if, what we're finding out is that you have a juvenile commits a violent act, we send them back to juvenile, the court sends them back to the juvenile system. They may sit in the juvenile system and if they don't have a placement within six months, the court in some ways is almost releasing them right back to the community without these services rendered. One of the other issues you see with a lot of juveniles, carjackings. So one of the things I think we're starting to see with the young juveniles- So one of the things I think we're starting to see with the young juveniles with the carjackings is that they say that this NCR, not coming responsible because of mental health issues. And I understand that. But then we have only a finite amount of time, six months, to try to get them to be, have the doctor evaluate them to see if they're no longer NCR. If we don't do it within six months, meaning we, the state, if we don't do it within six months, at that moment in time, that case will be dismissed. Also, with low-level offenses and roughness of juveniles, they're only going to be on supervised probation for six months. So any services they could have had. So our hands are really tied unfortunately by that law and by the law. And it's been very frustrating for us.
I appreciate that. I think it's a very, very sensitive issue. I'm really curious, even if by way of data, intelligence, coordination with your units and maybe, you know, what you guys are see or understand about the broader networks that maybe some of these young people are involved with, especially for carjackings. We know that these are groups of young people who are mixing with older people. We know that is in some ways a strategy. I'm curious if there are, even if you can't necessarily prosecute them, coordination, information, and otherwise that can be shared with other partners to make sure that we can get to those young people before they make a life-changing, life-altering, life-destroying mistake.
Well, what I can tell you is when you look at the MIU unit, they deal a lot with the federal partners and some of the state partners, and they're seeing younger and younger people participate in these actions. But unfortunately, their actions sometime are so viciously violent that you really can't do but so much in the juvenile system with them, because they're doing the violent adult actions. Do we also potentially sometimes see the adults? Yes. One of the things that we've also begun to look at from our standpoint is just preliminarily, what can we do to hold parents accountable for the young people's actions? There's a lot that we plan to do in that. We plan to dive in that even more. We pulled all the statutes to see what is available to us, but what really makes sense? You don't want to punish a parent who's trying to be the best parent possible, but just is struggling for a number of issues, a number of reasons. We want to really focus on those young people. I'd love to get them as many resources as possible, like our citation docket. We're not allowed to give citations to the young people, to the juveniles. Only DJAS can. And so, for us, it's very frustrating on our end, because, you know, what can we do differently? One of the things that I did, I hired Dr. Joel Bratton, who's done a lot of work with young people, has a doctorate in that. And so, he's working very closely, not with our, not only our office, but with DJAS, the school system, to find out what can we do as the State's Attorneys to try to help them. And we're in the preliminary stages. You know, I also, you know, have to say, I think there are some very good programs that I've seen in the past. We want to make sure what will work and what won't work, and then we're going to try to do that more in depth. I would say that next year we're here, I'll have more in-depth answers about the different programs that we're really working to be a part of.
I appreciate that. Do you guys coordinate with any inter-agency groups specifically focused on young people?
We, we have in per se, but that's one of the reasons I wanted Dr. Bratton there, so that I could have somebody with his expertise that knows the lay of the land of those organizations that work with young people. We're in the process, it's one of the things we've spoken about and talked about. It's one of the things we hope to do more in the future.
Yeah, I would definitely, I realize the limitations of what you guys can particularly do, but I would definitely love to see more coordination in that endeavor, because there may be pieces that, between you and other folks, that can help us make some headway here.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Do you saw the Junior State's Attorney's Program? We do not have that right now. We wanted to sit down, actually, I won't be shocked, we talked about it. It was a very good program. But it's a program that when we came in, we just weren't ready to do it. It's something we've talked about reestablishing in the fall, though. But it was a good program, I must say.
Ramos? Thank you, Mr. State's Attorney. Thanks for being here and all your work. I will just flag this for you, and we'll talk about it later. We did some successful interventions with the carjacking young people, the young people who did the carjackings in Ednor Gardens a couple of years ago. So I'll just tell you about how successful that was, and hopefully you can incorporate it into your, into your model. Needless to say, there are no more carjackings happening in that area or by those same young people. The question I had was, understanding that the citation docket is one way that you're handling low-level offenses. And the description that was just given to my colleagues about the open air drug markets is another. There are still several other low-level types of issues that we see every day that kind of feed into our crimes. So for instance, illegal tags and illegal, yeah, Virginia tags, and on cars that don't have insurance, because Virginia seem, as my understanding is that Virginia doesn't really check whether you've got insurance or not. So a lot of folks have, you know, these illegal tags. It's my understanding that there was a case that was, or some, several cases that were brought to be able to actually handle this, because it was done by like one or two of these tag and title companies. But that your office didn't follow through with that, and maybe just because you weren't ready, or something like that. But I would imagine that those are the types of things that you're also looking at, however, in terms of, you know, again, we want to certainly get to the most violent offenders. We want to intervene in people's, you know, so not, to us not to really continue to go further into, you know, these other issues. But then there's also these, you know, what ends up happening, of course, with these illegal tags, right? And the people with no insurance is that when there's, you know, accidents and stuff that, you know, the insurance company doesn't have anybody to go after, and it just becomes a disaster. So just talk a little bit about some of the other things that you're doing to address some of those low-level, and maybe you're not ready to yet, because you're still staffing up.
Well, first of all, it's good to see you, good evening, Councilwoman. I hadn't heard anything about that particular case. I will definitely look into that. If you give me a week, I'll get back to you about what I found out. But to be honest, if someone came to our office and had a case like that, and we didn't pursue it, then that's disappointing, we need to look at ourselves and do better in that regard. What I will say is that when you look at the traffic offenses, you know, the laws are right there in the book. You know, I, what I will say, and I actually see Ms. Taka here in the courtroom, and I would ask her to come up to talk about some of those traffic offenses in terms of those tags and what we can try to do with those particular issues. A lot of times we do handle that in the district courts, and handling that in district courts is a little, they're young, and we're learning. And so, but that's still no excuse, so I don't, you know, I'll ask Ms. Taka to address that issue.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak. At the district court level, we handle all of the incarcerable traffic cases in Baltimore City, ranging anywhere from driving without a license up to DWIs and hit-and-runs. I do, I'm very familiar with the situation that we have here in Baltimore City in particular with regards to these Virginia tags. The problem is, is that Virginia does not require a car to be insured, and they're allowed to be registered in the, in the state of Virginia, if I'm not mistaken, for a year. The problem that the, we have in Baltimore City is a stat, in order for us to prove that the, we have to prove that the person is a resident here in Maryland in order for us to prosecute them with regards to that Virginia tag. So we have to prove that they are in fact a Maryland resident to prove that they are required to have their vehicle insured here in Maryland. So it is very challenging. But I will say that the Baltimore City Police Department has a very aggressive LPR unit that is looking for vehicles that are not registered properly, that are not insured properly, that are registered owners, are not licensed, their driving privilege is suspended. The district court down at Hargrove, for example, we handle approximately 1,000 incarcerable traffic cases a month. So it is a very robust courtroom, equally at North Avenue and Walbash. So, we do prosecute traffic. We have a, you know, comparable to what the person's driving record is with regards to the driving uninsured and the cases that involve accidents particularly. We, for the driving uninsured and the driving without licenses, we focus on those accident cases, make sure that we can, you know, reach out to the victims, get in contact with them, ask for restitution when it is appropriate. So, we also do work with the Department of Motor Vehicles with regards to the non-licensed dealers, the people who are curbing cars in the city as well that, and their investigation unit. They do have an investigation unit that we work with and handle their cases as well.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
So, for us, we have the criminal citation. This is more or less a traffic issue. Now, in terms of the other citations, citation docket, I'll look to see what other things. But right now, this is, you know, where we decided to try to focus. We have the traffic, we have the criminal citations, some of the other offenses. You know, I think somebody even asked me today about, are you going to give citations to individuals that have their dogs off of a leash? So, you know, for me, that's, that, you know, that's a new one to me. We will look into that, because I know that that is an issue. But, you know, one of the things is we wanted to start out with, you know, some defenses on the criminal side that we didn't know. And then I think we'll look to see how this is going, what we're doing. Could I see us potentially going after or having the officers issue a citation for that? It's very possible. But, you know, we'd have to sit down and talk with the police department. We'd have to talk to, you know, Ms. Deros and everybody, look at the statute, look at the law. But, you know, there are potentially additional one, additional laws and citations could be issued. We just take our time, but first, we're starting out with these. They're the criminal ones, and then from there, we'll see where else we can go.
Okay, that, that makes sense. You're just going to start with these and then figure out if there's anything else. On that, since you brought it up, on the unleashed dog issue, we just asked the sheriff that he's going to start issuing citations. So it's a huge issue in one of my parks. And so, we can have a more robust conversation about that as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Name is Chair. Thank you, State's Attorney Bates. Definitely appreciate the focus on rebuilding the office from a staffing perspective, knowing that it is critical to our crime fight that we have an effective, well-built-out State's Attorney's Office. And I agree with your analysis that generally Baltimoreans are frustrated by quality of life crimes. One of the ones that my office hears a lot about is slum landlords. Folks who are not keeping their property up to code, who are, in some cases, subdividing houses and putting way more families in there than is habitable. Apartments and houses that have lead paint and mold. As you're thinking about ramping up your enforcement, particularly around these kind of quality of life issues, I wonder about slum landlords who continuously contribute to the degradation of our neighborhoods, of our communities, who sometimes live in our city, but sometimes don't. You know, has your office started to engage around how we could more effectively prosecute or just hold those folks accountable for what they do?
At this point in time, Councilman, thank you. We really haven't, in the sense that what do we do next with that? We did have a meeting with the housing office, and they have their own group of prosecutors. We talked a little bit about that. But we do need to spend more time understanding that. One of the things also that we wanted to do is to look at victims generally, whether it's in that realm, or is a victim of violent crime, or something like that. So one of the individuals that we did bring on is Amanda Grantham, who's here from the victim witness. And one of the things that I would just suggest that we then do, I'll speak to Ms. Grantham to find out, reaching out to the housing authority to figure out how we can do that. So what our victim division, we, it does now, is Ms. Grantham is coming there, there's 31 individuals. She's changed the narrative of that entire division in the sense that every time there's a victim crime, she has an individual who's going to be assigned to that case from her division, to take that onus off the prosecutor, so we can have a dialogue. And so now, if we're finding out the slum landlords and issues like that, we'll, we'll talk to find out, you know, and we can make, hopefully even reach out to you, Councilman, to say, okay, maybe we do have a point of contact, and maybe our office then will connect with the housing office to make sure that we figure out the best way to handle this. Because like you, yes, they are victims, and they do need to deal with this. And I think that, you know, I always give Ms. Grantham a lot of work to do, as it is. And here's one more thing on her plate. But, you know, I do feel that being a victim, that just because we don't know what to do right now, that we should be able to figure out how we get down to the bottom of it to serve the citizens.
No, and I deeply appreciate that, Mr. State's Attorney. You know, we do have, as you mentioned, the housing department has, in, in, their own enforcement capacity. They have the housing inspectors. In the previous hearing, I argued that we do not have enough of those folks to cover the ground that is needed. But I do think it would be advantageous for your office to team up with them, to really support that effort. Not where there's just, you know, some random code violation, but where we see persistent patterns of folks who are flagrantly violating the law and really exploiting and taking advantage of vulnerable people. I, I think to me, we have a few known bad actors in our city who consistently are getting multiple citations, multiple violations. And in my mind, there's not enough teeth yet to hold them accountable. So I would love to see that kind of collaboration and just cross-agency work.
Also, from our office, if I can have Mr. Jesse Halverson. He actually is the head of SVU, but he was in the office left, and he worked in the housing division. So I'd ask him to talk a little bit, based on his prior experience and knowledge, about how we could work with both of those.
Good evening. Thank you again for letting us talk about the work that we're doing at the State's Attorney's Office. I am Jesse Halverson. I was actually a deputy assistant commissioner in the Housing Code Enforcement Division for 18 months during COVID. I think I met some of you during that time. We're very aware of the, those issues with repeat offenders in the housing world. You know, the civil and criminal laws are very protective of property owners. And there is appropriately a lot of due process in that. And one of the, I think one of the projects there may be educating the bench about how much time is a reasonable time to give people. We had very heavy dockets there, actually, and went after a lot of the people. And I know you know Deputy Jason Hessler, and then the new division chief there, or Assistant Deputy Director is Seth Giller. And they do have a lot of inspectors. They have everything from, you know, the ability to put in mobile wireless cameras. They record dumping sites. They really are using technology to try to leverage their capabilities, so that with the staff that they have. But again, as you know, during COVID, all those inspections were permissive. It did create some, some problems. But I think we are interested in doing more with them, though the Department of Housing has moved primarily in the civil direction, because ultimately revoking their use and occupancy permits and making it folks unable to earn money with these problem properties, as well as trying to give them larger financial penalties for operating, if they're operating outside of the law, with, without the appropriate permits and inspections. Baltimore City actually has one of the most stringent inspection policies compared to surrounding counties. I think we're now up to over 20 points of inspection to get a licensed rental property in Baltimore City. So I think there are a lot of tools there. There has been an ongoing conversation about coordinating more and trying to do more with it. But I will say that is if you're talking about, you know, a call for, I don't want to say patience, but the judges in those areas do tend to give those folks a really long time to remedy the problems.
No, I definitely acknowledge and appreciate that. And we introduced some legislation, the Strengthening Renter Safety Act, which would hopefully really target our known offenders, our worst actors, and move in a more expeditious direction from a legislative perspective in enhancing penalties and ultimately taking away their ability to rent. And I will just say, you know, Mr. Bates had mentioned at the beginning of this discourse, needing to bring on Latino or Spanish-speaking attorneys. In our Spanish community, we see a lot of housing exploitation. We see a lot of multiple families being brought into one house. And we see a lot of folks who are not only not familiar with the law, but may not be English-speaking, and really get taken advantage of. And it's, again, you know, to your point, Mr. Bates, one of these crimes where there is a victim, but the victim is is a victim, but the victim isn't necessarily gonna come forward because they may be, they may have their own concerns over their documentation status, they may not want to get put out. But it is still, I think, really important that we collectively enforce the law and hold folks accountable that are, again, you know, financially profiteering off of the misery of folks in our communities.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Just to piggyback on, Mr. Bates, what you said early on about you intend to bring back some of those programs, and I just want to set this music to my ears. I greatly do appreciate it. As you know, I was a part of Aiming to Be More when I worked in the Sixth Attorney's Office. And it was challenging at times, but to give those young men and women a second chance, making a U-turn in their lives, I know will greatly be appreciated by those individuals. So, for you to say that you want to bring those programs back, if there's anything that I can do to help you as you attempt to bring those programs back, I'm just a phone call or email away. So, I just want to offer that to you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman. We also were looking at that, and we're also looking at an older adult division that will prosecute older adult crimes. One of the things that we needed to do, we needed to staff up. I mean, we look at our numbers, I think you see, we basically, our hire rate is basically one additional staff member every other day since January 3rd. So, we're moving as quickly as possible. Well, I suspect next year, we'll be in a different position when we have this conversation.
Mr. President.
Mr. State's Attorney, I know you're saying that you see, you said one additional staff person every, what? Every other day. Have you had any losses in staff during that time?
Oh, we have lost, we've had losses in staff as well.
What's that delta? How many people have you lost since January 3rd versus how many people have you gained since January 3rd? Because I think that's the more important number when we're talking about staffing. It's not just with State's Attorney's Office, we're seeing it across the board throughout the city.
Ms. Flynn, my Deputy Chief Operating Officer, she can answer that. But I do believe, if I'm not mistaken, that we have a chart in the PowerPoint.
It's just, it only shows overall staff fiscal year '22, '23, and then the number of ASAs, '22, '23, but there's no comparison, you know, positions was lost. So, I mean, just one, if you guys don't have it, you keep talking about the amount that you've hired since January the 3rd. I think the other question is, you know, how much folks we've lost. I mean, and again, this is not a State's Attorney's issue, it's an issue across the city. So, if you're doing something that some other departments aren't doing, definitely interested in trying to understand and know what you're doing differently. But we're seeing the same churn of folks in every single agency throughout the city.
I'd ask Ms. Flynn if she could possibly open a Deputy Flynn answer.
I can get you the specific numbers, but I believe we have lost approximately 35 to 40 people. But that would include sort of members of the last administration, as well as people who have come over here to work.
Yeah.
And, but I can get you those exact numbers.
Cool. I mean, because that's the real number, as opposed to, you gotta look at it in comparison. Thanks.
Council President Mosby, Catherine is almost exactly correct, it was 43.
So, you lost 43 and gained how many? 50-something?
59, almost 60, I believe.
All right, so, delta 17. Yeah, got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. State's Attorney, given, you spoke a little bit earlier about training for your attorneys. Given the severe equity concerns within the criminal justice system, is training on implicit bias, part of the prosecutorial orientation, or ongoing training, or retraining? And the other sort of piece of that, I know we've talked about this a lot, especially when you first came in, human trafficking, domestic violence, being able to identify those signs, identify victims who may not necessarily know that their victims are be conveying that, are those sort of some of the elements of the trainings that you plan to incorporate under your, you know, leadership in the office?
We have a couple of different trainings. Right now, the media training, which is training lawyers where to stand in court, how to answer, ask a question, just a basic job. We will eventually build upon the other implicit bias, all those other aspects of training. But right now, our focus in training is how to just do the job as a prosecutor, how to get evidence in, because we're finding that a number of the people that we've hired, they just didn't know. Also, we also found out that some of the unfortunately young prosecutors during the COVID administration, they just didn't know. So, we've had to deal with that type of training. I do know the previous administration did a lot of implicit bias training. I do know the office has had that type of training in the past. But we felt, right now, we need to focus on training individuals just to be a prosecutor.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. And I think particularly on the human trafficking, domestic violence piece, I mean, you know, obviously having, sending somebody to a conference is one thing, but we have, actually, Mr. Stack is sitting out in the hallway, he's the Human Trafficking Collaborative Co-Chair with myself. We do, he does training for law enforcement, BPD, EMS, Liquor Board, anybody, code enforcement agents, I mean, these are the folks that we're trying to, anybody that's engaging with people with potential victims of human trafficking or domestic violence. It's sort of pretty basic. And so, I think that there's opportunities, obviously, it's one thing to, you know, again, do more formal, professionalized training, but we have stuff in-house that I think we can pretty easily collaborate on, and we'd just like to, you know, obviously, work at your pace, I get it, you know, you're trying to change, establish a new culture in the office, you have a lot of new folks coming in, so I do understand prioritization. But I think, you know, as you move along, it'd be helpful to continue this conversation and figure out how we can better lift that up within the office, among all the other stuff that you're working on.
I do know, one of the things, also, the divisions, some of them had done their own individual training, more on the senior-level prosecutors. And I do know Jesse Halverson, who's in charge of SVU, if I'm not mistaken, he did do some. I can ask, actually have him answer the question.
Yeah, really quickly, some members of this group were here in February when we were talking specifically about human trafficking and trying to develop a more robust and built-out ability to respond. Mr. Stack, that you were talking about, was part of a training in Ocean City. We sent three prosecutors in March to that. John Ingham, who is a, really a partner in the Human Trafficking Collaborative, is actually embedded in our juvenile division, and people sometimes forget, because he's spent so much time and meetings outside of our office, is embedded in the juvenile division, where he trains people to spot human trafficking of juveniles, and also makes presentations to young prosecutors often as they're coming into the office. There is a, you know, related to, to, human trafficking is also sort of sex work and sexual exploitation, is actually a very good program, starting tomorrow, that's a two-day program, nationally recognized, it's at the Lord Baltimore Hotel, and we're sending several people to that training as well. It's a two-day thing, really, in trauma-informed investigations of sexual assault, sexual exploitation, and successful, bringing those cases to a successful prosecution using science-based techniques. You know, Mr. Bates made it very clear that human trafficking was gonna be your priority, and we're doing everything we can to train and expand that. And I can tell you, a lot of the young prosecutors that are coming in have expressed an interest in human trafficking, not just sex trafficking, but other kinds of trafficking as well.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Again, thank you, Mr. Bates, particularly for the emphasis on victims. I have felt for a long time that we have a bit of a discombobulated victim services program in this town, where there's multiple agencies that have some sort of fund for victim services, whether it's the Health Department, Monsey, the State's Attorney, BPD. And I think that it is very confusing for victims, particularly victims of violent crime. Also, just family members, you know, the folks who may lose someone as a result of violence, or even just of an overdose. So, could you talk a little bit, I know that one of your main focuses has been on supporting victims and their families. Can you talk a little bit about what that looks like, and particularly, how we can, as a city, do a better job of consolidating victim services, so that it doesn't feel so confusing and sprawling for victims of crimes?
Yes, yes, Councilman. One of the things that I did when our first hires actually was, you know, I was a Criminal Defense Attorney. And every time I was a Criminal Defense Attorney, I'd go out to Baltimore County, and Baltimore County knew what was going on with the victims, the witnesses. And so, I wanted to know who was the reason, and why was this happening? Why were they so prepared? And so, I realized it was Amanda Grantham. And I mentioned earlier, she was one of my, one of my first hires. And we hired her from Baltimore County. We rated their best and brought their best here. So, I know some of it, and I'm learning, but she's truly the expert. So, if I may ask Ms. Grantham to go ahead and speak on this issue.
Thank you, Councilman. So, victim service is kind of going through a big overhaul right now in our office. What we're trying to do is make sure that, one, we take a load off of the ASAs, so that way, they can truly worry about prosecuting the crimes. And then, that way, Victim Witness Division can actually support our victims and witnesses. Because when you really look at it, yes, we have lots of victims that come through our system, but those witnesses are victims too, because they've had to experience that trauma. So, what we're really trying to do is give each one of those people someone that they can rely on in the Victim Witness Division. So, what's happening now is letters and things like that are gonna start going out with their Victim Witness Coordinator's name on it, so that way, they don't just have a prosecutor's name. Those people have a contact that is kind of intermediary, where we can track down our ASAs and get those questions, because our ASAs are in court all of the time. So, what we want to do is really be that contact for our victims and witnesses, to be able to provide those services, and then refer them out to our partners in the community, and try to be that source of information where we can know, okay, this group works with this type of victim, or this group will help, you know, the elder community. We really want to be that source of information for anybody to come to, to be able to get that information.
No, I appreciate that very much. Will those folks also help with relocation? Because we know that that has been a major challenge in our city, right, is when folks are either a witness or a victim of violence, and the lack of safety, the sense of trauma that people experience, you know, if we're not able to, in some cases, help people to relocate, they become very, very vulnerable, and it has certainly been an issue for witnesses, and I think for victims as well. So, will those folks also be engaged in supporting relocation services?
Yes. So, that has been one of our top priorities, is really figuring out the relocation process. We've been collaborating with our Sheriff's Office, BPD, Monsey. We're currently seeking out meetings with our housing departments to really get everybody on the same page, bring everybody together in the same room, maybe weekly if we can make it happen, so that way, we can have constant case reviews of these people that we have, that we are providing the services to, because right now, it is completely disjointed. So, we do have a proposal that we are working on jointly with BPD to try to make sure that this is as streamlined as it gets. We really have started with a flow chart. If it's here, we go here, if it's here, we go here. And we're actively working to make that happen, hopefully within the next month or so.
No, that's great. I appreciate that. And I think disjointed is a good word to sort of describe how I think it has felt for victims of violence, as well as often for witnesses. And the last thing I'll say on this is, you know, again, I really appreciate this focus on victims, because we know that too often, if victims don't receive services, they may well become the next perpetrator, or be further victimized. And that these cycles of trauma in our city and in our communities, we see them play out all the time. And so, making sure folks get what they need, and are not left hanging by the system, and don't feel like they've been abandoned after this horrific thing has happened to them, I think is critically important, and I appreciate your office for picking that up. And I sincerely hope that we all can work in collaboration with Monsey, who's coming in here next, and the Health Department, and everybody else, because, again, having all these different pots and having it feel disjointed and discombobulated, I think, has done a real disservice to victims of crime in our city. So, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Colleagues, any other questions? Burnett?
Rapid fire here. Do you all track cases that are declined for prosecution, and also like the reason that they were declined? And I saw on your GVRS slide, it did appear that that kind of information is being tracked, but I just wanted to clarify that. And I guess, in those, in those instances where you may decline to prosecute, what, I guess, internal oversight is being done in the office to look at certain trends, or miss elements in investigatory cases? And, you know, trying to figure out like, all right, what went wrong here? What more information do we need? And I guess, that information being shared across law enforcement agencies to build stronger cases. And, you know, yeah, to make sure we're bringing quality cases, I guess, is the look there.
Well, one of the things we decided to do, we only began looking at what we did from January 3rd on. So, our five months of data, per se. We began to look at our five months of data, and we, individuals, the prosecutors, put the information of what happened to the case in the system. And looking at that, one of the things we realized is that, you know, for some of our cases that we may have had issues with, for instance, we would have stets and null process, for instance homicide. We can say that we've had 10 null processes and stets. Two were for legal reasons, two insufficient evidence, then plea negotiations, one was alternative prosecution completed, and was pursuant to a plea negotiation in another case. And then, six were because of victim witness issues, which the witnesses, or the witnesses didn't show up. So, we're trying to be more purposeful as we go through the process, and that's what we have in every single division that we have. For instance, we have stet null process, and these are the reasons we've dismissed the cases. And looking at the GVAD division, where we see that 48 we've dismissed, of which 32 we dismissed for legal reasons, whether it's a Fourth Amendment violation, and there was a hearing, a Fourth Amendment violation, in which we saw our own, and we dismissed it. One, the defendant was deceased. One, five of them, insufficient evidence nexus, meaning the gun wasn't near an individual that we didn't feel comfortable prosecuting a proceeding. Insufficient evidence, other reasons prosecuted elsewhere. For instance, 12 of the 32 cases that were dismissed for legal reasons were picked up by the feds. And so, we dismissed it, and the US Attorney's Office picked these individuals up. Then, we also have alternative prosecution completed on a couple of these, and pursuant to plea negotiations on other cases. And then, here are 11 victim witness issues in which the witnesses or the victims didn't show up. So, yes, sir, Councilman, we are keeping those numbers. We're having a more robust, we're having a better understanding. We feel we need a good year to two years of data to really understand what we're doing. But that was, once again, I know I keep harping back to victim witness. We feel that we can have more wins with cases if we can have better connection with the witnesses and the victims of crime, then they can come into court, they feel comfortable coming to court, then we can be more successful with our cases.
And just a quick follow-up on that. The, are you also tracking, two quick follow-ups, declined cases in addition to the dismissed cases? Are you taking, are you also looking at, or tracking the cases that you just declined to prosecute altogether? And I guess, what led to those decisions?
I have Tom Donley, my deputy, answer that.
Declinations usually occur at the unit level, and a declination is for lack of probable cause, quite frankly. And we could certainly run those numbers. We have started tracking mechanisms. You had mentioned GVRS. Well, GVRS was up and running when we came in on January 3rd. One of the things that we wanted to do was to build out our ability to track GVRS cases, because we are partners with the mayor and the Police Department on that. So, that is one of, when we got in, was one of the emphasis on GVRS. But we're starting to build out tracking mechanisms on guns, on ghost guns, on all the different types of felonies. But a declination is different than a stet null process. Stet null process, after it's been charged, what the result of the case is. Declinations really are large part based on probable cause. I mean, if there's probable cause, if we have a duty as prosecutors that if we cannot, we don't believe that we can win a case, that we shouldn't be bringing it, and it's a minimum of that probable, probable cause determination. So, as far as, what we're tracking as far as declinations, I'm not sure if that answers your question.
No, it does, it does. On that, you mentioned the victim piece, and I think that's a critical piece of that trust building. It's been eroded over a very long period of time, and I, you know, we all It's been eroded over a very long period of time, and I, you know, we all have examples of folks, I mean, I know people literally on my street that like witnessed very serious crimes, but were unwilling to provide that information, or were victims, unwilling to provide it, because they don't trust law enforcement agencies. Are you, and I think this was sort of alluded to earlier, victim advocate attorneys, folks who are trained in working and representing victims, is that a key piece of what you're trying to implement moving forward in sort of, this sort of reimagined space in the State's Attorney's Office?
Well, for us, it's not necessarily lawyers. For us, it was the victim witness advocates. So one of the things we found out was that the prosecutors are, they're busy, they're in court, they're in trial. So let's take hypothetically a homicide. They pick up the case, they investigate, they gate the case, they charge the case, they meet with the victim's family, talk about it, they've spoken to some witnesses early on, and then a year and a half later gets ready to go to trial. The prosecutor has eight, nine, 10, 12, 12, you know, cases, it seems, murder cases seems like a month, almost every other month. If we have someone who they witness, can talk to consistently, updating them every other month, every month, this is what's going on with this, this is what's going on with this, hey, Mr. Johnson, how you doing? How you feel? You feel, okay, now, you know, we're going to let you know, discovery will potentially go out, so, you know, but we're going to file a motion to keep your identity hidden, and, you know, then they're caught, they're abreast of the entire situation, being abreast of the entire situation, we've had that consistent relationship. People will not testify if they don't have a relationship with the prosecutor. And here, the prosecutor's busy, have the relationship with my office. And that's where Ms. Grantham and her division will excel.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions?
Mr. Bates, I have one final line of questioning, which will be very brief. Have you seen a positive effect on public safety in the city as a result of sworn federal law enforcement officers?
I have, in the sense that I think people in the streets know when the feds come in, they're not playing. And they have a 90-some percent, 98% conviction rate. So one of the things I had seen from this position, and having been on that other side of the table as well, is that when sworn law enforcement officers do come in, and they work specially, especially collaboratively with the local authorities, meaning the State's Attorney's Office, meaning the Police Department, meaning even the Sheriff's Department, things get done.
In your estimation, could we use more federal sworn law enforcement officers in the city?
Um...
Would that be effective?
I, it would depend how we use them.
Specifically with respect to violent, violent crime and very large-scale drug dealing?
Well, we have a pretty good relationship with the U.S. Attorney's Office, Hyatt and DEA, with the strike force. We partner MIU, they're doing a lot of good, good things. What I would say is, what you're talking about, sir, we're already trying to move in that direction. We just needed to reestablish those relationships, we need to rebuild that unit, that division. You know, Ms. Mildenberg, who spoke, she was in MIU before, left and came back, but she also went to the U.S. Attorney's Office and worked, and Attorney General's Office and worked. So she built those relationships. So now it's just not a prosecutor, it's a prosecutor with the experience, the knowledge, and those relationships. Those relationships mean a lot, because they've done cases together over years. Those cases they've done together, they know what they're doing. And a DEA agent, they want to work with prosecutors who know what they're doing, because they want the individuals who are going to go ahead and win the cases for them. And that's what we believe we've put together in our office, and so we do believe you'll see more of that collaborative working relationship with the U.S. Attorney, with the DEA, Hyatt and everybody, because at the end of the day, everybody has a vested interest in Baltimore.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Bates, thank you to you and your team for joining us tonight, all the great work. Please let us know how we can be helpful. We're now in recess, we'll be reconvening at 9:00 PM sharp for MONC.